I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the December twenty-second County Commission meeting. I'd remind you to silence your cellphones. The meeting documents are on the end of the counter in the white folder. And if you need listening devices, Robert is in the front row and he can help you with that. With that, we'll move on to routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I guess I'd like to approve the agenda, but I think we want to defer a couple items, don't we?
Correct.
So item number fourteen and item number sixteen, I believe, are the ones that we hope to defer. So if Commissioner Kelly would allow his motion to be...
I'll draw the motion and you can make yours.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda without fourteen and sixteen.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number two is approve the county commission meetings from twelve fifteen, two thousand and fifteen. Is there a motion?
Approve the minutes.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number three is bills to be paid in the amount of five hundred and five thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars and eighty... and ninety-eight cents.
Pay the bills.
Second?
Second.
A second. Any comments on the bills? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number four is reports. Item A is register of deeds, report of fees collected in November two thousand and fifteen. And that is on file in the auditor's office. Item number five is personnel actions. Carrie Dever, uh, excuse me, sorry Carrie, um, consider a motion to approve routine personnel action. Is there a motion?
So move. Second.
I have a motion and a second for routine action. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item B is special commission action to clarify, don't, excuse me, to reclassify the human resources general positions. Carrie Dever.
Good morning, Carrie Dever, Human Resources. These positions were originally classified in two thousand and seven. And since then, the scope of responsibilities of our office have greatly expanded. These positions have, are now responsible for expanded duties, including pre-employment physicals. We have one staff who's managing the pre-employment and the random drug and alcohol testing program. We have increased responsibilities for compliance with the Affordable Care Act, including reporting and filing, um, different items for compliance for that. We've also taken on responsibilities with Lincoln County, which has greatly expanded the complexity of at least two of those jobs. They're handling more benefit-related insurance issues for a wholly insured organization as opposed to our, um, self-insured program. We have additional employee relations issues. Given all the changes to those positions, we discussed during the budget process reclassifying those positions, just one pay grade from sixteen to seventeen. And today is my formal request for your approval for that change and to approve increases for the three people in those positions.
Are there any questions for Carrie on this?
I'll make the motion to approve that.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number six is applications for abatement. There are none. Item number seven is notices and requests. Item A is authorize the county auditor to publish notice of hearing to consider application for a retail on-off sale malt beverage license from Tucker's Walk Vineyard, south one half, southwest one quarter, including, oh, what do you call that? The Whaley, Whaley tract one, exception H dash one, and exception Copel addition twenty-four dash one thirty dash forty-eight. And that is an authorization, so is there a motion?
I saw move.
Second.
A motion and a second to authorize that notification. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number eight is planning and zoning. There are none. Item number nine is compromise of lien, Jeff Barth, and we have several of these.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first one we'll go after is, uh, the DPNO six one eight nine five for four hundred and fifty dollars. And then DPNO six one nine six three for eleven fifty-nine. The applicant has asked for, uh, a compromise and release of these two. There's no real estate involved. The, uh, the, the one amount is actually duplicated in the second, uh, DPNO. So the first DPNO, six one eight nine five, uh, is duplicated in the second amount. And so first of all, I, I think we should go ahead and dismiss that one. And then address the second one. So I'll make a motion to, uh, dismiss, uh, six one eight nine five for four hundred and fifty dollars.
I have a motion and a second to dismiss DPNO six one eight, none, nine, five because it is a duplication in records. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
So the second one for, in the amount of eleven fifty-nine, uh, represents, uh, things provided in two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight while they were married. The applicant is, uh, willing to pay half the amount and have his name removed from the lien. And I think that seems, uh, reasonable. So I'll make a motion to, uh, have him pay the fifty percent of that remaining amount, leaving the rest towards the ex-spouse.
Okay. Is that a motion?
It is.
Second.
Second, Cindy, do you have a number on that?
Pardon me?
Fifty percent. Do you have a dollar mark?
Five hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifty cents.
Five hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifty cents with a motion for DPNO sixty-one nine six, six, three for five thousand and seven. What, excuse me, let's try again, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifty cents. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. All right. Item B, Jeff?
Yep. So then we go on to DPNO two seven oh six two, um, DPNO three six six two four, DPNO eight oh three three oh, and DPNO two nine nine five two. I should have listed those amounts. The first one is in the amount of five thousand two eighty-one. The second one is four hundred. The third one is fifteen, sixteen, and forty cents. And the last one is thirty-five oh four eighty-eight. One moment. That's what I see on my sheet, anyway.
Yeah, that's right.
So this one, there is a, uh, a home closing scheduled for January ninth. And I gotta say, I do appreciate it not being later today, uh, which we've had a couple that came in right at the, at the nth, uh, degree or time. The, two of the liens are solely in the applicant's name. The third is in the name, uh, of her and her ex-husband. The fourth is in, uh, the name of the applicant and another ex-husband. Both liens include ex, that include ex-husbands, represent services provided before, during, and after their marriages. The DPNO three six six two four is for four hundred dollars solely in the applicant's name. It was for services from Human Services. DPNO eight oh three three oh is solely in the applicant's name. It was incurred for public defender and court-appointed attorney, provide, uh, services provided her juvenile son.
Commissioner Barth, do you want to deal with those two liens first? Or would you like to deal with them all at once?
You know, I guess I hadn't decided how the...
Okay.
This one's got two ex-husbands, children, and multiple...
I think I'd do best to do them individually.
Okay, I'm certainly happy to do that.
Let's start with that first one for four hundred, DPNO three six six two four for four hundred dollars. That was the one that is in the applicant by herself?
Let me say that the applicant is hoping to clear these, uh, uh, I believe for, for no payment. Is that right, Robert? So, uh, I don't know if the applicant is present. If they are here, they're, certainly speak, they don't have to come to the podium or identify themselves. They can, um, sit where they are and speak. Is the, is the applicant present? Okay, staff says no, so we'll proceed. And again, the, this first one here, uh, is for four hundred dollars solely in the applicant's name. It was incurred in two thousand and eight for services provided by, uh, Human Services. And the applicant wants to, uh, dismiss this with no payment.
Do we have any documentation that this house is closing?
Robert Wilson of the commission office. And I have spoken with the title company that is handling this, this closing and has researched, um, this item leading up to this point. And that, that title company is really the, um, the reason that, um, we were able to organize the, uh, the liens that are in play in this case. Because quite, quite honestly, even in our research, there was a, an additional lien that, um, uh, that we didn't find. And so we have confirmed that, that she is working with a, uh, a title company and, and working towards a close. And have, have confirmed that that is the, um, agreed-upon sale price. And understand that that will, the, um, information provided to you in the briefing memo is what, um, what, what her proceeds would be if, uh, if no liens were in place. So yes, that we have confirmed that the sale is, um, scheduled to close.
Are we in line to get any of these payments once it's sold? If, I mean, if we don't compromise the liens to some way, then the house goes into foreclosure. Are we going to get any payment when the house is sold?
There, there have been no, no, um, arrangements or, or any, um, requests or, or, um, uh, no, no. I, I would...
Oh, sorry, Kirsten, sorry Kirsten.
Since we had to go to the title company to even get information about where these obligations were coming from and who was responsible, I can tell you that no one has given us a clear picture as to priority of any liens that were on this property. So I can't say if we'd be first in line, last in line, middle in line. I have no idea. It's just a dearth of information, I guess.
Commissioner Kelly?
Well, irregardless of whether it's a foreclosure or whether it's today, the lien stays in place until we forgive it, correct? I mean, even if it goes into foreclosure, the lien is still against property. Am I not correct there?
It will, it will stay on the property, but it'll be prioritized based on certain factors as to who gets paid. But once the foreclosure closes, no, it will not stay on the property if it goes through foreclosure.
Madam Chair, I, let me just, uh, go a little further here. The applicant, uh, claims assets, uh, including the home she's trying to sell, uh, a hundred, of a hundred and four thousand, eight hundred dollars. And liabilities of eighty-two thousand. That leaves the, uh, outstanding mortgage balance in two judgments. One in the amount of just under six thousand dollars. She has an income of twenty-six thousand, but is currently not working because of an accident two weeks ago. I think that, uh, our best way forward on this is to, uh, make a compromise, not in full, but, uh, in line with, uh, some others that we've done. And, uh, and ask her to pay that in advance of this closing. And there is time, uh, if, if she would choose to come back, uh, and counter our counter, so to speak, counter our offer.
Much compromise, Jeff.
Uh, so, I guess, uh, my, on these two, I believe that, uh, I would make a motion to compromise both with a payment of nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars and twenty-eight, I'm sorry, twenty cents. Nine fifty-eight, twenty.
That would cover DPNO number three six six two four and DPNO number eight zero three three zero.
That's correct, Madam Chair.
I have a motion to compromise those two liens for their fifty percent, which would be nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars and twenty cents. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
I have a second. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Okay? We have two more to go, Jeff.
Thanks. So, okay, then we go on to, um, DPNO two nine nine five two in the amount of thirty-five hundred and four dollars and eighty-eight cents, which is in, uh, in the applicant's name and ex-husband number one, I'll call him. During the marriage, liens of fourteen twenty-one fifty-eight were incurred and payments of five hundred and twenty dollars were received for a net of, uh, nine oh one fifty-eight. All other assistance before and after the marriage was provided to, uh, husband number one. Payments of three ninety-four fifty were also received before and after the marriage. The net increase in the lien balance incurred outside the marriage, uh, by the ex-husband was twenty-six oh three. And so I believe that, uh, you know, if we dismiss the, uh, the stuff from outside of the time they were married, that leaves, uh, help me, Cindy, is that the nine oh, nine oh one fifty-two? Oh, yeah.
During the marriage.
So... Okay, that's right. I had it going in the right direction. Is nine oh one fifty-two, and fifty percent of that would be four fifty seventy-nine. And I would make a motion to compromise DPNO two nine nine five two for four hundred and fifty dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Okay, leaving the balance.
Leaving the balance, uh, to the ex-husband number one.
Okay. Is there a second on that motion?
Second that.
A motion and a second. Are there any additional comments on DPNO number two nine nine five two for the amount of four hundred and fifty dollars and seventy-nine cents? All those in favor say aye. Oh, excuse me, Commissioner Bennett again?
I just want to verify that. It looks to me like there's been partial payments on this one over a long period of time of just over nine hundred dollars. Is that correct? I'm just adding it to my head, but... We've got, uh, nine payments.
No, that's, uh, there were...
No.
There was five hundred and twenty, and then, uh, there's three ninety-four fifty. So it's, uh, just under, uh, just over nine hundred bucks, Gerald.
Yeah.
And so we're looking at the remaining, uh, nine oh one fifty-eight.
Okay, thank you.
I have a motion and a second on that DPNO. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Then we get to, uh, the fourth DPNO on sec, uh, ex-husband number two. DPNO two seven oh six two, the amount of five thousand two eighty-one and ten cents. Five, five hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty cents were incurred while they were married. An additional amount was, uh, made after, uh, before and after solely to the ex-husband. And payments of, um, one thousand two dollars and fifty cents were received. Mister, uh, I'm sorry, the husband number two is solely responsible for the increased lien balance of, uh, four hundred and, four thousand, seven hundred and two dollars and sixty cents. So there, uh, at that point, then, uh, we figure five seventy-eight, eighty, or fifty is the amount that the applicant is co-responsible for during her marriage. Okay, so fifty percent of that is what I'll make a motion to, uh, to compromise.
The amount is two hundred and eighty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents, two eighty-nine, twenty-five. Is there, Jeff, is that your motion?
That is my motion.
Is there a second?
Leaving the balance.
And leaving the balance against the ex-husband number two.
Second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments?
Yeah, question.
Yep.
We're compromising half of the amount that incurred while they were married. And then the, the balance of that was incurred after the divorce?
Yes.
Well...
Before and after.
Before and...
Before and after the marriage.
Well, there's also the fifty percent, uh, that we're not compromising for him. So he's, he's responsible for the other fifty percent on, on what we're considering.
What were those, those, uh, what were they for? Public defender?
They were public defender and, uh, public advocate type things, I believe.
Do we have any idea whether either one of those gentlemen are still in this area? Robert knows.
Information, uh, from speaking with the applicant is, uh, one of the individuals is incarcerated. And I do not know what the status of the other individual is.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second on DP, nope, this one?
That's for the previous one.
Okay. For DPNO two seven zero six two in the amount of two hundred and eighty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents. And to leave the remaining balance against the ex-husband. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Oh, motion passes three to one. Okay.
Madam Chair, I would just comment on all of these, that, uh, the applicant wanted to get off without any payment. And that, uh, certainly we need to get back what we can because other people are in line waiting for these similar services. And, uh, we need to collect on behalf of the citizens of our county.
We have one DPNO left, which is DPNO number eight eight three nine two in the amount of three hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Jeff?
Working on it. Okay, this is, uh, one where, uh, the applicant, uh, requested a, is requesting a compromise with no, no, uh, payment. There's no transaction involved. The lien involves a single, um, billing for a court-appointed attorney, uh, from September of this year. The applicant initiated an IVC hold on her adult daughter for issues related to substance abuse and did not expect to incur a lien. This issue has come up, uh, many times. And, and clearly, you know, if, uh, if, uh, you know, your spouse turns you in, uh, on IVC, your, your spouse gets the bill, but if your fellow commissioner turns you in, there is no bill. And it's a little odd because, uh, obviously, people are caring for their family members. And, uh, I, I think there's a bit of a double standard there where we bill one and we don't bill the other. In this case, uh, the applicant, no doubt, was trying to help her daughter. And, uh, I don't think that we should be billing for these, uh, these good faith estimates or good faith, uh, efforts to, uh, care for a, a family member. And, uh, I don't know if I'll get support on this, but I'll make a motion to, uh, to agree to compromise this loan with no payment.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other additional comments?
Question. Is there a lien put against the person that was committed on the IVC?
No. They didn't initiate it.
This person was never even put in. Was never...
Okay.
I have a motion and a second to, um, release the three hundred and eighty-seven dollars against DPNO eight eight three nine two. Comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. The next is opportunity for public comment. This is when anyone can speak about a subject that is not on the agenda. If you would come forward to the microphone and give your name and address.
Good morning. I am Darlene Walhoff, eight oh five South Hillview Road, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. I have some handouts here.
Robert, could you read those? Thank you.
What my comment is, I purchased my license plates at a kiosk at the Get and Go on East Tenth Street. Um, as you'll see in there, I intended to buy licenses for a car, a pickup, a van, and two homemade trailers. Because of the way they're titled, there was two that came up on mine when I put in my license. I purchased them, excuse me, expecting to see three more licenses on the screen when I purchased the second mount. And there were, and so I purchased them with my, uh, credit card. What I got was not license tabs for my vehicles as was, was put on the screen. But I got tabs for a boat and trailer that we had sold two years ago. Um, I immediately contacted the county treasurer because I realized that a mistake had been made. And I was told that was a state issue. So I contacted the state. Well, okay, that day I went down there, I was told by the county treasurer she could have refunded my money if the state would give her authorization on that day, before the funds were settled and they were appropriated out into the county. Um, could not get ahold of anyone at the state, so I was not able to get a refund at the county. Um, also was told that the kiosks were not something she was aware of how they operated, which I find interesting since they are coming from the county, Minnehaw County, and they are available for us to purch, purchase licenses. Um, on the next day, I contacted, uh, the state and the state told me that, um, I talked to an, uh, individual and she asked me if I could read, which I assured her I could. And she told me on the screen it said there was no refunds offered. But my intent was, I assumed records are correct. Bad on my part. We'll never assume that again. Um, expecting to see what was given to me on the cards, as you see on the third page, the cards that were sent to me were for the two homemade trailers, the truck, the van, and my CRV. So anyway, I talked to, um, escalated up, talked to Sadie Williams at Sadie Stevens at the governor's office. She had talked to someone at the Department of Revenue who then said if we could, um, produce a bill of sale, which we did, uh, for the boat, it went into North Dakota. And where it gets interesting is we signed the title over to the individual that purchased our boat. And he, uh, his name was Chad Parton, and he took the title. Bad assumption on our part, North Dakota does not require a title to be filed on a boat. So apparently, that still stayed in our records in Minnehaw County, that we owned the boat. But we were not ever even on the screen last year for the boat and trailer to be licensed. So anyway, I continued to visit with Sadie Stevens, uh, young lady. She talked to the Department of Revenue. They authorized full refund of a hundred and sixty-five dollars and forty cents. And that, those letters were, are here. They're also included in the package. I contacted Minnehaw County Treasurer. I asked what I needed to deliver to get my refund. She told me I needed to bring down the license tabs, which of course I had and didn't need anyway, and to bring down the letters. So I came down that afternoon, brought the letters, uh, from the Department of Revenue, signed by Brenda King. I, she proceeded to plop two other letters on the counter that authorized a refund of sixty-five dollars rather than the hundred and sixty-five, stating that she would, she only agrees to refund one year of licenses. My intent was not to purchase any licenses, so let alone by two years. I have nev, and I did not take copies of those letters, my bad. I assumed I would be getting copies in the mail, which I never have. So I refused to take the sixty-five dollars as settlement because I think in good faith and as a taxpaying citizen of Minnehaw County, I should be treated with the same respect that I treat anybody else that works, that does their job. Um, I'm only asking to be treated fairly. I have since purchased the two license tabs for the trailers that were on the original cards that I received. So my request is, and I understand that you may not be able to say anything, is that something needs to be done. There was, there definitely is a lot of finger pointing between the state and the county, the state and the county. I mean, every time I talked to state, they said it's a county issue. Every time I talked to county, they said it was a state issue. But as it turns out, the state authorized it and apparently refunded the money to Minnehaw County. But I will not be receiving a refund. So that is my comment, and I understand you can't do anything. I think I will be going public with this because this is not right. There are other people that may have done something similar and have been told. I guess I'm fighting for, for the citizens of Minnehaw County. And, um, if their records are not correct, I'm sorry. And if I inadvertently did not realize that I was purchasing a boat and trailer, I make mistakes. Everybody makes mistakes. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Walhoff. Any more public comment?
I try to run the office following the state laws and the rules. And I tried to do that without discrimination and treat everybody equally. Now, quite frankly, Miss Walhoff, Mrs. Walhoff is not entitled to a refund because first of all, she's not an owner on that title. She should not have been allowed, and was not, should not have been allowed to license that vehicle because it's not in her name. Now, had she come down to the office and had a notarized slip or something giving her authorization to do that, she would have been able to. But if you look at the transaction and the business, there's nine minutes apart. She was there nine minutes earlier, then left and came back. My assumption is that she went home and got her husband's driver's license in order to make that renewal. But that may not be the case, I'm not sure. But only licensed owners of a vehicle can license that without a notarized slip. As for the statute on refunds, it talks about miscalculation. Weight trailer, of a trailer, or perhaps it was an error because when they took it over the scale, it weighed less. There are specific reasons that you could issue that refund. And the law changed as of 2008 when House Bill 1081 went into effect. Because the plates now stay with the owner, the rationale is that that owner does have the opportunity, as long as the plate is current, to put it on anything newly acquired. So they will have some benefit in keeping that plate. When the plates didn't stay with the owner, then the rationale was that, and that they wouldn't benefit from that. So the law is different today than it was back then. And so, quite frankly, she isn't eligible for the refund. And we have to apply the laws the same for everybody. Now, I don't think it's good policy that we change those rules and make exceptions for people who are willing to complain to the commissioners or go to the governor or to the Department of Revenue and Mr. Gerlach. But the policy should be the same and I apply it the same for her as I would for anybody else. And I'm just not making exceptions because you cry to the governor or to the commission or to anybody else. And it's my decision, so, thank you for your time.
Pam, if I may, and by the way, you didn't identify yourself, but you're Pam Nelson, our county treasurer. So, does this happen to other people?
Maybe I want to be anonymous, no.
Does this happen to other people where vehicles that are sort of ghost vehicles are, show up on their, on their bill?
The statute presumes that people know what they own.
Right, but if you have
And it happens.
A dozen vehicles.
It happens. It happens. And they've never refunded. They never refund, so. Unless you go to the governor or somebody, apparently.
How often does that happen? And is it, is it our issue?
I wouldn't say it happens all the time, but it happens more than.
Is it the state issue? Or, I mean, who's got the database?
Well, the database, that's another issue. The database may not be correct because they didn't get a seller's permit and they didn't report the sale. Had they done either of those two things, our records may have been correct. And that's why we have reports of sale, seller's permits, so the records are more accurate. Now, it's true that in North Dakota you don't license those things, but if they had notified our state, the state record would probably be more accurate.
Again, Madam Chair, so Pam, this is happening to other folks as well, though?
It does happen. People make mistakes.
Okay, and so would you say once a month, or?
I don't know, Jeff.
Okay.
It, I wouldn't say it happens all the time. I wouldn't say it happens infrequently. I think it happens. In the past, we've always not given those people the money back. The state rules say they don't. They're, on the South Dakota Cars website, it says they don't.
If I may, so Pam, do we get the money when they do it at the kiosk? Does the money come to us, or does the state retain it?
At some point. But in the case of boats, the state gets the money.
So the state got to keep her money, but they want us to do the refund? In this case?
I'm not sure. My guess is, they authorize the refund if they want. But, you know, if you cry to the right people, you might get what you want.
Let's not complain about crying, but I'm just wondering where the money went.
You like whining better?
Where it should be.
The money is where it should be.
Okay, with us?
Yes. Well, at some point, some of it is ours, yes.
Except for the boat money.
Except for the boat money. The trailer money is ours. I mean, I just can't change the policy because somebody's not happy about it. Otherwise, if you change the law, change the rule, then I don't have a problem. But until those things are different, I'm following the law. Just like I didn't charge people before the law went into effect, I'm not changing the law now.
Looks like we better contact our legislators and change the law.
Yeah, but I'd be arguing against it, but.
Any other comments?
Well, I'm.
Commissioner Kelly.
Is the Crestliner a boat?
Yes.
And then the Eagle trailer, obviously.
Right.
And that boat money, that whole $81 goes to the state.
My understanding. I just collect the money.
Thank you.
And I know what I need to collect.
All right. Commissioner Bannock, are you going to say something or are you going to move on?
Yeah, this, this is a little weird in a standpoint that the request for the, for the county to refund came from the Department of Revenue and not from the governor's office. So are we saying that the governor called the Department of Revenue and told them to call the county?
I only know, I don't know. I have no privy to what was had. I only know what I was told. And I was told by Darlene that she, the state mentioned that somebody had complained to the governor. I'm, she implied that they talked to the Department of Revenue, which would be Mr. Gerlach.
But this.
And I think they're doing what they think is right. They want to be helpful, but I have to apply the statute equally and fairly. And we've told a lot of people they can't have it, so. If you want to change the law and then everybody has that opportunity, I have no problem with that.
I think what I would ask, if possible, Kirsten, if you wouldn't mind just looking up the law and I'd like your interpretation because there seems to be a, an issue with the fact that this came from the Department of Revenue rather than, frankly, anybody else.
That's not the issue.
No, it is, because
Well, not for me.
Their interpretation evidently is different than yours. Or they wouldn't have sent this letter. So I think I would like at least a second opinion on the fact that the Department of Revenue doesn't agree with you. So what we need to do is to perceive or pursue that and then come back and try to figure this thing out. That's my opinion. And if the legislature needs to change something, that's another issue. For right now, the Department of Revenue, who I think is also responsible for maintaining statutes and laws, has a different opinion than we have.
Go for it. I'll change my mind. And I've consulted lawyers too, and they agree with me, so.
Well, that's good. Then we'll.
Not necessarily. I consult more than one and a couple judges to be sure I'm on sound legal ground.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? We'll just have Kirsten look at that. With that, we will move on.
One more.
Which two items were deleted? 14 and 16, right. Okay. With that, we'll move on to regular business, which is, did you have a public comment?
No, no, I'm.
Okay.
Try not to waste anybody's time.
That's fine. Number 10 is consider a motion to approve the 2016 retail on-sale license and Sunday sales license for the River Ridge Golf Course.
Good morning. Bob Litz from the Auditor's Office. And as you recall, a couple of weeks ago, we did have the bulk of these from the, the county permits for renewals were passed by you as a commission. This was not, however, due to the fact that we did not have the check or the application in at the time. It came early last week, and so we put it on as quickly as we could. There's no violations or objections reported by state's attorney, planning, or sheriff's office. So today, it's being requested to approve the 2016 retail on-sale liquor and Sunday sales license at the River Ridge Golf Course, which is just south of Garrettson.
Okay, any questions?
I'll make that motion.
Motion is a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number 11 is authorize the chair to sign agreement between Minnehaha County and Southeast Behavioral Health for qualified health, mental health professionals, QMHP services at the Juvenile Detention Center. Jamie Grabett, good morning, Jamie.
Jamie Grabett, Director of the Juvenile Detention Center. It's time to renew the contract for our QMHP services with Southeastern Behavioral Health. Since its inception in July of 2013, we've paid the same price for our services. One of those services is on-call services. We've been paying $50 a week for that. Southeastern's actual cost has been $100 a week. The only change in the contract that I'm asking for is that we increase that on-call price to $100 a week that we would pay them for their actual cost.
And Jamie, I believe you addressed this in your budget for 2016 already.
I did, yes.
Is there any questions for Jamie on this? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the agreement.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 12 is authorize the chairman to sign the 2016 agreement between Minnehaha County and Southeastern Behavioral Health for the Mobile Crisis Team. Good morning, Robert.
Good morning, Commissioners. Robert Wilson with the Commission Office. Back in 2011, the county partnered with a pretty broad group of local stakeholders to develop the Mobile Crisis Team pilot project. And the goal was to reduce the number of involuntary mental illness commitments and when appropriate, to direct individuals to, who were experiencing some sort of a crisis event, to outpatient supportive services. This was an opportunity to both save public funds and to provide better outcomes for individuals who were experiencing a crisis event. Because of the success of that pilot program, that was expanded and authorized as part of a program to continue and is an ongoing program within the county's mental illness budget. The Mobile Crisis Team works very closely with local law enforcement in the field to assess individuals who are having some sort of a crisis event and determine if something other than a protective custody hold is appropriate. And if an alternative is appropriate, the team assists in connecting that individual with, with resources in the community. The county has partnered in, for the provision of QMHPs, Qualified Mental Health Professionals for the Mobile Crisis Team with Southeastern Behavioral. And this partnership has continued to be just in a very, very good and beneficial program for, for the county. Since its inception, Minnehaha County has had an informal agreement with Southeastern Behavioral to provide the QMHP services. Today, what we're, we're looking for is your authorization to approve a formal agreement that records the same parameters of service and, and the same process that we have used, but just in a more formal recording of it. And Chris Graham with Southeastern Behavioral is here and would be able to speak to the program and service in more detail if you, if you wish, but I just wanted to bring this, wanted to bring this to your, to your attention for consideration and to, to formalize this very positive agreement that we have had in place for a number of years. This does not in any way change the cost of this program or, or the process that we will, we will use and continue to use. It's just a, a formalized understanding of what we, what we have been doing. Just as a, as a review, the, the budget for Mobile Crisis Team that was authorized as part of the 2016 budget, it's $21,000, $121,000. The 15 budget was $105,800. And actual expenses in 14 were $90,956. And then in 15, the actual expenses were $85,054.72. And I certainly would point out that that, those amounts are much less than we, than we as a county would be spending if we had additional levels of commitments that were, that were required because we didn't have this level of, of review and this additional option at, at our disposal. So, I don't know if you have any, any questions for Chris or, or myself, or if Chris would like to, to say anything, but we would be available for, for your questions.
I would just point out that the dollar amount that you gave for 2015 is year-to-date and we still have at least a month to go through, so that, that $85,000 will be a little bit higher by the end of the year when we close out the books.
Very good point.
Commissioner Kelly.
Robert, I have a question, because you made a kind of subjective statement there that there's been significant decrease. Have we got any, what are the numbers for IVCs? Have they, in the three-year period, have they reduced? Have they gone down?
You know, for those, those specific numbers, I probably would, would look to either Chris or to Mr. Osti, who's also in the, attending the meeting in the audience.
That's fine, whichever can answer.
Yeah, I, I would, I would look to them to, for the specific data.
You have to come up here, identify yourself, Chris, and that would be great, then we can all hear you.
Hi, I'm Chris Graham, CEO of Southeastern Behavioral Healthcare. To date, right now, we've had a 90% diversion rate for holds. So of the calls we've had so far, 456, we diverted 90%. So, the Mobile Crisis Team has been very effective in reducing the number of holds as we've gone through the years and done that, so, does that help? Do you have?
Well, yeah, if I may. The IV, when you do have the commitments, they go to Southeastern, is that correct?
No, what do you, the commitments.
If you choose to commit the person. If the mobile team goes out, I guess the best example is the threatening suicide and they're drunk and when they wake up the next morning, it's, does that person go to Southeast?
No. No, if we need to do a hold, they go to Vera Behavioral. If we diverse, if there, it's a diversion, they actually go to, they may come to Southeastern, but they may go anywhere in the community. Mobile Crisis use is a resource. So if they actually do a hold, or that does not come to Southeastern.
Well, I guess that would be my question then, is what, I mean, you say you diverted 90%, which is awesome.
Right.
But what were the numbers prior to having the Mobile Crisis Team and what are they today? Can you answer that one? For your time, Jim, but maybe you got the numbers.
My name is Jim Osti and I'm one of the chairman of the County Board of Mental Illness. I don't know if we have the numbers that specifically address that question. Looking backwards, but looking forwards, I can tell you that we are going to be 150 to 200 petitions higher than at any prior year in history. Despite the fact that Mobile Crisis is going to be able to be credited with avoiding 400 more holds. So the accomplishment is fantastic.
Is there a reason for that, or what? I mean.
A reason for the increased caseload?
Yeah, I mean, we don't know when we, even when we started this thing, it was to divert, which, which is happening. But in fact, if, you know, if, if, if our IVCs are still going up, or, IVC, is that the proper term? I'm not sure.
I worry sometimes.
If the commitments are going up, I'm confused as to how we weigh the success of this program.
I don't know if we could go anywhere and learn the answer for why the numbers are going up, but you could take a social approach and say that with things like Sandy Hook and the Colorado theater shootings and a number of other.
Jim, can you speak into my?
A number of other catastrophic type events where the fingers have been pointed at mental health issues and perhaps shortcomings of the mental health system nationwide. Maybe more people are reporting psychiatric crises. Maybe, maybe that's the answer.
Commissioner Burr.
To Commissioner Kelly's comments, I think, Jim, in the past, before we had the Mobile Crisis, didn't we just put people in jail because we weren't sure if, if they were drunk, crazy, or, you know, suicidal or criminal or whatever, so we would just, you know, the police officer on site didn't really have the tools to make a, an assessment that would lead to diversion to a, a more appropriate treatment facility.
I think there's a lot of truth in that.
So whatever we divert with this program is, is taking people and treating them better than, than just putting them in the slammer or whatever.
Well, the, the beauty of it is, the diversion is either to staying at home with their families
their families and children and jobs and property and doing so safely, when otherwise they would have been a hold and they would have been detained, either at a hospital at significant cost, or at the jail, uh, with significant stigma, I guess. So, if, if you can resolve the crisis safely out on the street before you get to an institution, that's a very favorable, desirable result. And.
And I'm not in disagreement that.
I'm sure you're not.
Conceptually, I just am struggling to find, and it's not only your group, I mean, there's, we fund programs and, and then, three years down the road, you know, you try to say, well, is this program working? And ask that question, and, uh, I frankly don't see the answer yet.
Commissioner Kelly, in this last year, we would, we've diverted around four hundred people, I believe you said?
Right.
If we would not have had Mobile Crisis Team this last year, those four hundred people would have either been in the hospital, or they would have been in jail.
Absolutely.
I understand that.
Right.
But that means we'd have doubled or tripled what.
What you're actually counting as holds yourself would have gone up by four hundred, so.
So instead of a two hundred, one fifty to two hundred increase for calendar two thousand and fifteen, we'd be dealing with five fifty or six hundred.
Right.
Which would have great costs.
And oftentimes, we're finding in Mobile Crisis that it's the first-time person who's having suicidal thoughts, and so we're not seating, seeing repeating people. So, we've been able to de-escalate, work with them on getting resources in the community, and you're not seeing them again on the Mobile Crisis list. So that's a high percentage that you won't have going through your other systems of jail and the hospital, so.
I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna overreact to your questions, but Mobile Crisis and the Board of Mental Illness is just a very small part of the greater problem of mental health. And by and large, we don't even come forward thinking that we're gonna provide a societal solution. We're just responding to the crisis and trying to minimize it and keep it out of the institutions and keep you from overtly paying for it.
Right.
Yeah, I, I mean, we understand that in the jail, I mean, that's a huge problem for us in the jail, and jails across the United States. So you're right, there, there is a national mental health crisis, but I'm just trying to get my fingers around some numbers, uh, as, in addition to what the theory is. But I'll stop for now.
I don't think anybody's got the answer for why it's coming up so frequently now.
This is an authorization of the Chair to sign the agreement between Manyah County and Southeastern Behavioral for the Mobile Crisis Team.
I'll make a motion to authorize the Chair to sign that agreement.
Second.
Motion and second, are there any additional questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Item number thirteen is consider a resolution appointing regular and alternate lay members of the County Board of Mental Illness and the County Review Board for Developmental Disabilities. Jim Ostie, we're gonna have you right back.
My name is Jim Ostie, and I'm one of the Chairman of the County Board of Mental Illness, as well as the Board of Developmental Disability Review. The statutory scheme makes the Chairman the head of that board and provides for the appointment by the County Commission of two lay members, non-attorney members. We've been blessed with very gifted, experienced people, dedicated people who've served for a long time, but their three-year terms are up, so this proposal is simply to seek reappointment of basically the same group of people in somewhat different positions, perhaps. We have had one of our valuable members suffer health problems, and he's indicated he can't serve any further. So I found a substitute person that all of you know, whose name is Mona Helseth, and, having given the service she has to this county, it shouldn't be surprised that she's willing to serve further, and she will be very valuable to this group as well. In the HSC crisis context, we are having and we're going to have many more hearings than we have in the past, and that's gonna make these people come forward on Tuesdays and Friday mornings for hearings, and it's gonna place an additional need for having alternate board members so that people can be spelled when they have other obligations. The, the members are all employed, I guess, with the exception of Ms. Helseth, but they take time, and they're able to take time out of their primary occupations to come and do this. So, in a fashion, this is a very perfunctory request for continued appointment.
Okay, so this is item number thirteen, consider a motion to approve the regular in-lay people. Commissioner Bennigan, do you have a comment?
Jim, if you wouldn't mind just sharing, and I don't need to know a lot of details, but obviously this is a very specialized field, and the, the individuals who have volunteered, can you just give me what their career position is, besides an interest in what this is?
I believe, uh, Ms. Johnson is a nurse, I believe Ms. Higrigs is a nurse, Jan Schmuck is a retired nurse.
Okay.
Our member who's bowing out was a, a salesman who sold all kinds of medical and pharmaceutical things to doctors, and, uh, I guess in a fashion, Mona Helseth doesn't have that kind of a medical background, but having, for thirty-five years, negotiated between judges and prosecutors and defense lawyers and the law, uh, she's blessed with the kind of common sense that we need.
Thank you.
I, I don't mean to say that medical expertise or psychiatric expertise isn't important, but these decisions by and large are commonsensical, and we have our QMHPs and our psychiatrists' doctors testifying in front of the board, so if a person is intelligent and commonsensical, they'll be very adequate for the job.
Well, obviously, they are very professional and dedicated to giving some, something back, so that, that's really what the question was, because some of us who are on multiple boards, some, sometimes the questioning or the concerns or the issues you deal with aren't, uh, something that we deal with on a regular basis.
I think they develop an expertise over time as well.
Yep.
Is there a motion on this?
I move that we approve the nominations.
Second.
A motion and second, any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number fourteen is consider a resolution to set, pardon me? That was pulled. Oh, sorry, that's the one that's off there, okay, sorry. Item number fifteen is authorize the purchase of one two thousand and sixteen Chevy Impala in the amount of seventeen thousand three hundred and seventy-two dollars from Beck Motors in Pierce, South Dakota, from a contract competitive bid and awarded by the state of South Dakota. Kristen Trana, good morning.
Good morning. I'm Kristen Trana, I'm the administrative coordinator at the Sheriff's Office, and I come to you today to request authorization to purchase a vehicle. I wanna be forefront in saying that it was not put in our budget. It's something that we had requested for the two thousand and fifteen budget, but when, um, when money was so tight, it was one of those things we pulled out. We've seen savings in our budget that we would be able to do this. We had requested it also in the two thousand and sixteen budget and had pulled it out of there as well. So, if we have to wait until it's budgeted, it's gonna wait until two thousand and seventeen, and I did list the mileage that we're seeing on the Civil's cars, and it's something that we really could use, and, and to, to be able to get it at this price would be very beneficial for the Sheriff's Office.
And the money, there's money in the budget that would cover the cost?
It would come from a different ASN than the vehicle's ASN, but we would use, um, between current expenses and capital expenses, the savings in those ASNs to, um, offset the cost of this.
Any questions for Kristen? Commissioner Burr?
Just quickly, so the actual expenditure would happen next year when you get delivery, or are you getting it still this year?
It would be our intention to order with two thousand and fifteen funds. We will probably need to carry over funds, um, and I'll work with the Auditor's Office to do that. It was something that we ended up having to do last year with a late delivery of a van that we'd, that we'd purchased from Billion, um, we, in the jail, we had to carry over some funds, but that happens, um, with credit cards and, and a lot of different expenses that happen here at the end of the year that we don't get the invoices by the end of January.
I move for approval.
Motion, is there a second? Motion and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion pass, passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item number seventeen is a public hearing to consider adoption of the county's five-year bridge and highway improvement plan as required by the South Dakota Department of Transportation. D.J. Boothey, good morning.
Morning Commissioners, D.J. Boothey, Highway Superintendent. There we go. All right, I have a PowerPoint that we put up there. Uh, this is a public hearing, uh, this is for the, um, five-year bridge improvement plan, transportation plan that the Department of Transportation requires any county to conduct and, and submit to their department if they are wanting to be part of the Bridge Improvement Grant Program. And so, that is something that Manyah County is definitely interested in and intends on participating in, and so, uh, this is one step that we have to go through in order to be, uh, one of the counties that has those funds available to us. Uh, this year, this first year, as you know, SB one, uh, the transportation funding bill that was, uh, that went through the legislature this, this year, uh, this is the first year, so, uh, there's a lot of abnormalities associated with two thousand and fifteen, just because the scheduling is, is off, uh, with the administrative rule process not really, uh, being completed until late in the year. And so moving forward, it's gonna be a lot different than it is, uh, this year, and so, uh, that's kind of my precursor into, uh, we submitted our plan, it had preliminary approval, and, and that was great, uh, they had great comments, uh, but they did say that we did not do the public hearing process correctly, uh, that was because we didn't know that, nobody knew the rules of the public hearing process until late in the year, and so as we went through our budget cycle and, uh, beginning in March and then ending in September, uh, we were unaware of what the public hearing process, uh, was gonna be required. Uh, we knew that when we submitted the information, and we begged for forgiveness as we submitted it, and they said, no, we're actually gonna have you go through the public hearing process, even though your, your plan is already completed. And so, uh, we, uh, we're here today with our public hearing that was, uh, noticed a couple weeks ago, and then, uh, we're giving the presentation today. As part of the, uh, public hearing, I got this presentation on a PowerPoint, and that just is gonna describe some of the philosophy of how we conduct our transportation plan. It is almost identical to our four-year long-range plan that we, we prepare for our long-range planning process and budget process with the county. Uh, the only change is basically that we add a year at the end. And, uh, there also is a lot of inventory data that is, is part of the five-year transportation plan that we don't necessarily put into our long-range plan, it's something that we, we do prepare and we keep on record in our, uh, department, but it's not submitted with the long-range plan. Uh, the inventory data is road information and bridge information, and I'll get, uh, get to that as part of this PowerPoint. So why is a public meeting required? I basically described, that's part of the administrative rule process, uh, from SB one, and, uh, they require a public hearing, uh, period. The public hearing, uh, it, it requires us to send written invitation to the townships as one of the stakeholders. Uh, they're not directing our process, but they are stakeholders that are involved because we, uh, have several of our structures that are on the township road system, so, uh, we are required to send invitations to all townships, and we did, and I see a few of them are, are here with us today. Uh, the plan elements, uh, as part of the five-year plan, we have to submit, uh, to the DOT, and it includes a written certification of adoption from the County Commission, and so that's one thing that we'll ask at the, at the end of today is, is for you, authorization for the chairperson to sign off on the adoption of our five-year plan, and that it also has to substantially conform to all the STDOT guidelines as set forth, uh, in the administrative rules, and, and we have received, again, like I said, preliminary approval of that. Uh, our plan does meet their guidelines, and so, uh, this is just the next step in that process. Uh, like I said before, the plan includes an inventory of roads, all of the, all of those bullet points right there are items that are included in our inventory of roads, and I think that is an attachment as one of the, the packet agenda items. It's a very exhaustive, long document that has a lot of numbers and tables and, and might be difficult to digest, and so I advise you, if you have any questions about any of our road inventory, inventory data that you just ask us, and we can walk through some of that with you. Along those same lines, inventory of bridges, uh, those are the bullet points that we are required to submit with our inventory, uh, to the DOT as part of our five-year transportation plan. Uh, we definitely have a lot more bullet points in our own, uh, department inventory list, uh, that we look at all the time, uh, but that's what we are required to submit to the state. Uh, we do have, uh, that information in the packet also, and we do have a board printed with some of that information, just knowing that it might have been a topic of conversation today. Uh, some additional items, the statement of financial resources and the five-year project list, uh, that is the majority, the bulk of what we do for our long-range plan. Uh, the statement of financial resources is, is our revenues through our budget process, and then the five-year project list, of course, is the list of projects that we have planned over the next five years. And then today's public hearing. Uh, the public hearing requirements, uh, we are required to submit the evidence of the notice to the townships, the letter that we send out, an attendee list, and so I'll ask everybody that hasn't signed, uh, the attendee signup, signup sheet today, uh, to sign that, especially if you have any comments that you wanna make, we wanna make record of that, uh, in the minutes that we submit to the DOT. Uh, the project list is the same as our long-range plan, it includes, uh, the listed items there on the, on the bullet points. Uh, the biggest thing that, that will be new to us is any project that we want to go with a, a bridge improvement grant, uh, we have to identify that in our five-year transportation plan, and so, uh, we haven't, uh, we haven't submitted any applications yet this month, or the beginning of January, we'll be submitting our first application, and so, uh, that'll be a new process too, but we're excited to, uh, get going on that with a big project in two thousand and sixteen. So this is the first page of our projected revenues, uh, basically pulled straight out of our long-range transportation plan, uh, that you all have seen before. Uh, the highlighted items right there are of note, they're the state highway funds, they're the STP funds that we receive. Uh, for the next four years, we'll be receiving the payout of the, uh, the balance that we've got with the state, and then, uh, the top line there, uh, that's a, a continual payout that we will receive indefinitely unless the rules change. Uh, that dollar amount, we've, we've budgeted as remaining consistent. Uh, some of you may have heard that there was a federal transportation bill that was passed, uh, a couple weeks ago, and so we're hoping that that number will, will begin to go up, and, uh, we won't really know that probably for several months until all the rulemaking process, uh, gets through the federal government and the state government, but, uh, we hope that number will go up for us. But you can see in the bottom line there, uh, total revenues, uh, is over sixteen million dollars next year, and then by two thousand and twenty, we're, uh, over eighteen million dollars, so our revenues have gone up pretty significantly here in the last few years, and, and that's really great because we have a lot of projects that, uh, that we have on a backlog that we wanna be, begin working on.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Burr?
May I just ask, uh, D.J., so I noticed that our revenues go down, though, uh, in two thousand and seventeen, and, uh, but those state hu, highway funds stay, are consistent, so what's, what's happening?
There's a line item, other federal grant revenue, uh, that has the blue numbers, I think it's three lines underneath the yellow.
Is that the stuff we do with UDC and stuff?
That's some grant information that I'm gonna get to on the next slide.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And so you can see there's the big grants, uh, there's, uh, the countywide signing replacement project, uh, there's a lot of projects that we do that, that are paid through either at a hundred And so you can see there's the big grants, uh there's uh the countywide signing replacement project. Uh, there's a lot of projects that we do that that are paid through either at a hundred percent or different reimbursement rates through the state government, and and a lot of them use federal dollars. And so, uh the previous slide will show a summary of some of the some of the projects that are shown here using uh other sources for funding.
DJ, do you want comments or questions?
If if you wanna ask questions, go feel feel free, yeah.
Uh, they're paying out the the balance that we had. We had a kinda like a bank account.
Yep, we had a balance of uh STP funds at the s- at the state.
Um, so they're paying that out over four years, then there won't be those funds available anymore.
On the bottom line of the two yellows, the two yellow lines, that's the uh state highway funds balance payout is what it says, the four hundred and forty-three thousand nine hundred and fifty-one dollars per year. That's the balance payout that will only be there through two thousand and nineteen. And then after that, we'll only receive our annual allocation.
So zero isn't quite... Oh, okay. But there will be, I mean, there'll be an offsetting number. Cr- I mean, there was money going into that fund.
Yep, there is.
From the feds.
There's STP money that goes into that fund, and that's the-
Using it, then it then it stayed in.
Accrues, right. And the top line of the two yellow is that that annual allocation that we receive and from the federal government. And so that six hundred and seventy-nine thousand four hundred and eighty-four dollars is what we receive annually. And and some years we weren't using that, and so that was accruing into an account in in peer, and that balance payout line item, the next line item is the payout of that balance that we had. And so after two thousand and nineteen, that that account will be zero, and so we'll no no longer be receiving the balance payout dollar amount, but we will still receive the annual allocation.
I'm still trying to figure out what Senate Bill One did to us.
Senate Bill One wasn't really anything to do with the state highway funds, other than uh it it led to the state promising that they were gonna continue the state um allocation of six hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars.
This is more of a policy change?
As a policy change, yeah, yeah. And the way that they fund it, it changed that way a little bit too, but it really didn't have any impact on us. The the funding dollar amount is really set uh through formulas that come from the federal government. And so, uh moving ahead to the next slide is the two thousand and sixteen projects. I I certainly can go through these one by one, uh but it's not my intent. It would take a long time to go through the next five years of projects, and so um we have a lot of project maps that we can show you after the meeting or or at the end of the presentation. If anybody has any questions on specific projects, but uh the intent of the state is that we just show them that we're planning projects. We're not just throwing together haphazardly things to do every year. And so, uh this is our two thousand and sixteen project list. And we have a two thousand and seventeen project list, two thousand and eighteen project list, two thousand and nineteen project list, and two thousand and twenty project list. And so, uh we have a number of projects. The farther that we go out from uh the current time, uh the more up in the air some of those projects might be because we continue to uh change our program, or the the program evolves based on current conditions. And so, it's definitely not a shot in the dark when we look at two thousand and twenty, but it is more of an estimate than uh two thousand and seventeen, for example. And so, our program for two thousand and sixteen and seventeen is is pretty good. It's it's set in stone for the most part. There might be some changes based off of some bridge reports that we receive. Uh, but as we get out to two thousand and twenty, uh we're looking at more systematic type projects that we're gonna be looking at, and it's it's hard to identify the real down and dirty details of those types of projects. Uh, this map shows some of the surface treatments of the roadways in different colors for the next five years, and then it shows stars. Uh, that might be a little bit difficult to see unless you're on your iPad and you zoom in a little bit, uh for the bridge projects in two thousand and sixteen. And so, uh we have a project map that we've included with our our submission to the state and and your documents there, and uh we intend on uh again, this map evolving all times. Uh, as we add projects to the program or or uh years of the projects might change, we'll change colors, so we have a good map that we can reference and and uh sometimes that's easier to look at than a spreadsheet full of project lists and numbers. Uh, any information that we presented to you is available. You've got all the information on your iPads uh through Dropbox. Uh, we can, we can get you hard copies of any of that stuff uh that you might need. Uh, one thing I wanna emphasize, uh we've had uh several uh new bridge uh structures that were included in our uh weight limits this year as a result of the specialized haul vehicles being um assessed or addressed uh during the uh bridge inspection process. And so those, uh that's kind of a red flag for our department. We're gonna look into those and see if there's some projects that we can come up with to try to uh reduce the uh the impact to our bridge system and the traveling public on our on our road system. Uh, we have right now thirty structures uh that are posted on our our bridge system. That's up from nineteen a couple of years ago, which we're not very happy about. And so we're gonna aggressively pursue getting that number back down. Uh, we have a backlog of uh reconstruction on our road highway system of four percent. Uh, that equates to about fourteen miles of of reconstruction that that we need to look at doing uh in the near future. We're gonna start in the next two years with a five-and-a-half mile reconstruction project just north of Hartford, uh to begin working on that. So, again, uh we have a pretty aggressive maintenance schedule, uh maintenance program uh to work on this stuff. And and what the state was intending with this uh process is just to show to them uh that we are planning and we're looking forward into the future years and and coming up with a maintenance schedule and a maintenance process, uh so we're not just reacting all the time at a worst-first situation. So, uh I think that we do a a pretty good job in our in our department programming these types of things. Uh, the comments that we get back from the state are very positive uh when we submit this kind of stuff. And so, uh like I said, we look forward to working with the state in the near future on a Bridge Improvement Grant uh over on Redwood Boulevard by Brandon. Again, please be sure to uh sign the record of attendance sheet, and then uh the next five-year uh plan for two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and twenty-one uh will begin already like in March or April when we begin the budgeting process. And we'll probably have this uh this uh hearing process as part of that, since we already do a lot of budget hearings through our budget process. Just makes sense to combine them rather than go later on. Uh, so thanks for listening. Um, if you have any questions, I can certainly try to answer them now, if anybody from the audience has any questions too.
Commissioner Barth.
Uh, DJ, uh thanks for the professionalism of your department, but uh so this uh hearing was actually required to uh earlier in the year. Was that after the passing or signing into law of Senate Bill One? Is that the deal or?
The hearing is required as part of the administrative rules, which were uh completed after the law was uh was adopted in April. And so, the administrative rule process, I th- the uh it takes a long time. I think the administrative rules were adopted in September. If I, yeah, September was when they-
We had three months to comply with the the rules, and then we get to go another three months and have another hearing.
Right. Like I said, two thousand and fifteen is certainly gonna be a goofy year uh for everybody. Uh, basically, every highway department in the state that that wants to try to comply this first year is doing some sort of a last-second public hearing process to try to be able to be in compliance.
Thank you.
Any other questions for DJ? This is a public hearing. Is anyone who wants to speak in support of this plan? Anyone who want- you have to come up, identify yourself and give your address, please. We're looking for support of the plan first.
Royal Selken, four-five-eight-eight-eight-two-forty-ninth Street, Humboldt, South Dakota, five-seven-zero-three-five. And I'd just like to say that the bridge thing is kind of out of hand. It's like, you go down a road and there's a bridge there that's the weight is reduced on, and you're traveling on the road and and uh there's a bridge, and y- you gotta find a way around it, or you gotta lighten your load. So, it's just one of the things that if we can get this bridge thing, if we can take out the bridges and put in a culvert or something like that, until we get money to put bridges in or something like that, that'd be good. So, whatever they can do to keep the bridges uh to the weight of the road, that would be good. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Selken. Other public comment in support of the plan?
Dennis Swann, our supervisor's Split Rock Township, uh some time back, and Mr. DJ Boothey and I and all of you have the, they addressed it, the Maple Street uh confrontation with uh the problems we've had up there over the years, and now with one hundred going through. I'm just curious if there'd ever been anything done with the future planning between now and the timeframe that we're looking at uh in regards to looking at what could be done or what might be done for funding or anything in that area also, along with all the bridge work. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. DJ, do you have any response to the question?
Sure do. Uh, Dennis, uh we did look at that, uh just, hey, the date's gonna escape me, but maybe six months ago. And at the time, we came up with a a report that we submitted to the commission, and I think that uh Split Rock Township probably received a a copy of that too. But uh at at the current time, our recommendation is not to do uh uh the sort of take over uh Map- uh Maple Street as a county highway and and pave it. Uh, but we will definitely keep looking at traffic counts on an annual basis and and uh reviewing that regularly. And uh at at which point, uh we can make a recommendation, uh we certainly will, uh to the county commission to to do something further as part of a project. Uh, Shannon is working with the MPO and CCOG uh for them to do a traffic study, uh not only of that area, but a a few different hotspot areas in the county. And uh, is that gonna be in two thousand and seventeen or sixteen?
Their fiscal year is half sixteen, half seventeen.
Okay, so during their fiscal year, which goes from sixteen to seventeen, uh they're gonna be looking at a traffic study of of multiple different areas, uh very similar to Maple Street um and some spots on our county highways that we're gonna be looking at, some turn lanes and things like that. And uh and so, uh as far as Maple Street specifically goes though, we will be looking at that every single year, doing some traffic counts. And and at some point, I would imagine in the future, uh we'll be making a recommendation to the county commission to do something as far as the project goes, or try to work with some of the other entities to uh do a combined effort project.
Okay, thank you. Is anyone else that wants to speak in favor of the plan? Any proponents? Are there any opponents? Anyone who wants to speak against the plan? Seeing none, um any comments from the commission before I ask for a motion? Look for a motion to approve the highway five-year bridge and highway improvement plan?
That's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Number eighteen is consider a motion to approve the highway construction change order number one in the amount of five uh five thousand seven hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty cents to the contract with BX Civil and Con- uh Construction for project number MC Bridge Railing two thousand and fifteen. DJ Boothey.
Uh Commissioners, as you're very well aware, just in the last few weeks, uh we're doing a lot of final change orders on projects in order to do our uh process, our final pay applications. I think that we've only had one significant increase. Uh, this one is a a significant increase of over almost six thousand dollars, over five thousand dollars of an increase. Uh, that's primarily because we had an accident on one of our roads that uh destroyed some guard rail, I think on a bridge. And so we uh had this active guard rail project, and we did a change order in order to uh fix that guard rail as part of this contracted project, uh so we didn't have to do a separate project. So, uh that's the majority of the reason of the increase on this one, uh but it is needed to do the process of final pay application. If you got any more questions, I can sure answer them now.
Make a motion to approve that change order. I do have a question.
Okay, I have a motion. Is there a second?
A second, and then I got a question of DJ, which-
There's a second? Commissioner Barth has a question?
DJ, so when a private party does damage uh our bridge, we go to collect from them if we can, right?
That's correct, yes. We don't work with a collection agency, but uh Sandy in our office, she works with the usually the insurance company of the uh the party that was at fault, and and we do a pretty good job of collecting uh to reimburse our efforts.
Commissioner Kelly, did you have a comment?
I would say this is brilliant minds. Think alike, 'cause that was my same question.
Well, if I may follow on, just, this isn't a question, but in the telephone business, our our poles, our telephone boxes, our buildings, they're getting knocked over all the time. And to be honest, you're not safe anywhere as a pedestrian unless you're in a concrete building. And uh it's amazing how people can uh, we had a building where the guy drove across over two hundred feet of grass and then hit a brick building. Why, I don't know, but it caused a lot of damage.
I have a motion and a second on item number eighteen, which is a highway change order number one in the amount of five thousand seven hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty cents. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number nineteen is consider a motion to approve professional services agreement between Minnehaw County and Infrastructure Design Group Incorporated for design services in the amount of one hundred and twenty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars and fifty cents for replacement of structures MC fifty dash zero-seven-zero dash zero-nine-eight and seventy dash zero-seven-two dash one hundred. DJ Boothey.
Uh, Commissioners, this this comes at a good time, I think, after one of the public comments that we heard on our uh transportation plan. Uh, these two bridges that we're looking at requ- uh requesting authorization to replace are not currently part of our uh long-range plan. Uh, they weren't budgeted for two thousand and fifteen for design. They weren't budgeted for two thousand and sixteen for design or construction. But they were uh identified during our bridge inspection process as as two bridges that are in poor condition as it relates to specialized haul vehicles and subsequent- uh subsequently posted. Uh, the way that these are constructed, uh they're not uh they're not able to be um fortified in any way in order to remove the posting. And so, uh we basically have to replace these if we want to get the posting off of this two- off of these two structures. Uh, we've looked at it a few different ways, and we've come to the determination that that is what we would like to do moving forward is to replace these two structures. Uh, they're both on county highway systems. Uh, they're uh a route that's commonly used on the way to the Lions Elevator and probably some other places too, like Hartford. And so, we don't right now have a set-in-stone construction timeline, but we do know that we have, um like I said a couple of weeks ago, almost a million dollars in in unspent funds from two thousand and fifteen that we would like to move forward with getting uh some designs on the shelf, ready to go for construction. So when we can budget them through the next budget cycle for replacement, uh we're ready to go with the construction plan. So, uh this agreement is for the preliminary design and the final design of these two structures, and then through the budget cycle uh beginning in March, uh we will look at uh construction year for these. Right now, I would say it's probably the two, uh the fall of two thousand and seventeen at the earliest. Uh, but like I said, we'll have to look at a lot of different variables and other projects to see if that works and within our budget.
Any questions on this? Is there a motion?
Move for approval, second.
I have a motion and a second to appro- approve the professional services. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Item number twenty is consider a motion to approve the following substance uh supplements, excuse me, substances, supplements. Um, Kim Adamson, would you wanna just go through them, Kim, and then we can uh prove them as one motion?
Sure. Good morning Commissioners. Kim Adamson from the Auditor's Office. Uh, we have a list of seven different supplement areas. All uh the results of reimbursements are passed through grant dollars. Um, the first three items are to the human services budget areas. The first for an exercise account, the result of vending revenue. The second item, uh donated funds to print bus passes. The third item to supplement uh human services expenses for donations received. The fourth item, a supplement to the safe home budget, again for donations received during the year. The fifth item to the state's attorney's budget for salaries and benefits, as well as equipment associated with the state uh the highway safety grant for DUI prosecution. Those items totaling one hundred and sixty thousand four hundred and twenty dollars. The sixth item to, also to the state's attorney budget for data processing equipment, uh due to an award by the state of South Dakota for the drug control grant. And the last item, uh two pass-through grants, uh one for the hospital preparedness grant for ninety-three thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars, and the second for the Indian Child Welfare Act for professional services for a hundred and four thousand fifty-eight dollars.
Are there any questions for Kim? Do I need to read the ASN numbers with the amounts for the motion?
Well, it would be nice to have the amounts, I think.
Okay. I'm gonna just go through, if there's no questions for Kim, I'm just gonna read the ASN number and the amounts for your motion. Um, item A is ASN seventeen-three-seventy in the amount of three hundred and forty-two dollars and seventy-eight cents. ASN seventeen-three-seventy-three in the amount of two thousand four hundred dollars. ASN seventeen-three-seventy-four in the amount of two thousand dollars. ASN eighteen-eighteen-zero in the amount of four hundred and fifty dollars. ASN fifteen-six-hundred in the amount of one thousand three hundred, excuse me, one hundred and thirty thousand two hundred and thirty dollars. ASN fifteen- ASN 15607 for $9,708. ASN 15609 for $7,821. And $8,053. ASN 15636 for $4,608. ASN 15691 for $12,137.74. And ASN 2353 for $93,815. ASN 2356 for $104,058. And that's all of them.
Madam Chair, I do have a question on the last one.
Okay.
You know, that's 2356, professional services of $104,000. Who gets that money?
That money is used for expert witness services. We currently have a contract with a gentleman to provide those expert witness services.
And thank you for that. I just, I know that some of these other grants, people are getting big bucks for things and it's not necessarily getting where it should go and I just wanted to know. I would make a motion to approve them all.
Look for a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Kim. Item number 21 is liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports? I would just say, I had Robert make two copies for you from the Chamber of Commerce meeting this past week. One of them is the Chambers 2016 Legislative Platform. It is a draft form. And the other one is the resulting analysis of the 2015 Legislative Issue Survey. Both of them very interesting and instead of talking about them or making Mark talk about them, because I'm sure he will be visiting with us a lot in the future in 2016. Those are the papers that I have for you this month. Are there any other liaison reports?
From the Development Foundation side, excuse me, Foundation Park, it appears, you know, there hasn't been much, but there's a lot of activity going on out there. There's about four sites that have either letters, a letter of intent or signed or pending or something. And my understanding is it'll be annexed next week, I think, in the City Commission meeting. I'm not sure.
Okay. All right. Any other reports? Okay. Is there any new business?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
You know, this is a great time of the year and I'd like to wish all of us here, everyone listening, the whole county staff, Merry Christmas and just say God bless us everyone.
Thank you, Jeff. Any old business? I would say the same for the commission office and all the staff. Thank you very much to Minniac County and all that they do for us and I hope you all have a wonderful Christmas. I'm sure everyone is anticipating their 24th afternoon off. So, that being said, I have...or do you have old business?
Just a couple of comments for you, just as a reminder that laying in front of you is your...we're going to be starting working on liaison assignments for next year. So, we do appreciate you giving us your wish list, your desire list, your opportunity list to go through and do. And just a reminder for the commissioners and the public, and also in two weeks is your first organizing meeting of the year, January 5th. And one of the things that you will be doing is setting your commissioner's salary at that time. So, if you wanted to be having any discussion with the public as you're out and about, this would be the time to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd look for a motion to adjourn into executive session for legisla...and personnel.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion adjourned. Meeting adjourned.